Welcome to the public hearing for the zoning board of appeals for the village of Southampton. Thursday, October 28th, 2021. We have two applications that are ready for decision. The first is case number 3114. 155 Captain's Neck Lane. And I understand that we do have, in that case, the covenant that in the event the property was sold to a third party, the gazebo would be moved or dwelling constructed thereon. So I think we are ready to vote on the decision as written permitting an accessory structure where no principal structure exists at 155 Captain's Neck.
And Chairman, just to clarify that what the covenant provides is that if it's sold to a third party and that party doesn't have the same arrangement as currently exists, which is that it's essentially in the same ownership. If it's in, if it's owned by two different people, then they would have to remove and bring it into compliance.
Okay. I think I understand.
So that the same mission would be accomplished, that it's the same entity that owns it, a member of that group?
Can I have a motion to accept the decision as written?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. So all in favor of accepting the decision as written for 155 Captain's Neck Lane, case number 3114. Julia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Joyce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So that's a unanimous in favor of approving the decision as written. The next case we have ready for decision is case number 3111. The Bathin Corporation, 14 Gin Lane. Can I have a motion to accept the decision as written?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor of accepting the decision as written in case number 3111. Joyce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Susan?
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So that decision is unanimously accepted as written. We can move on to our pending cases. We have a request from the applicant in the case number 3110, 54 North Main Street. Can I have a motion to accept the applicant's adjournment request?
So moved.
And a second. Joyce, can you second that? So all in favor of accepting the adjournment in the case of 3110, 54 North Main Street. Joyce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Julia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And Susan?
Aye. Reluctantly.
So we have our pending case number 3112, 88 Hunting Street. Is the applicant here to present?
Yes, he is. I'll move him in. Okay. Bruce, you can unmute. You're in.
Hi, good evening. I think Eric Bregman is here. He's actually going to present. I'm going to share my screen and I think Eric is going to drive the narrative.
Okay, I'll bring him in.
Thank you. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Mr. Bregman is in.
We're looking at an aerial view. That's what you want us to be looking at primarily.
You guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have Eric. I'm basically just going to be Eric's hands here and if he needs me, I'll just going to move the screen around for him.
Can you guys hear me now? This is Eric?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, Bruce, could you put up the site plan with the?
Absolutely.
Path to the bed. Yes, there we go. Thank you. So I won't repeat the whole presentation last time. Thank you for listening to it then. But there are a couple of points I'd like to make. One is that the, as the chairman noted in the last hearing, the key decision here is to balance for you is to balance the benefits of the applicant versus the burdens of the community. That's what the village law applies. I know you know all this. And once you make that balance, you can make your decision. Now here, there is a significant benefit to the applicant. We went through it before. There's the only bathroom is over here. You can see that there are walkways from the pool that are shown on this map. And it's, that's the only, you have to go through the living room, through the family room to change or shower. And also, there's no place to store the furniture, the outdoor furniture, except the garage, which is all the way over on the east side of the property. And there's an area there to store, but it's very far away. So what this does is it provides an area in the northern little section that's 10 by 10, small shed if you will, and four with the bathroom and a shower. And on the south, it has a storage area and there's a sitting area in between. And between the sitting area and the storage area, the furniture that they already have just essentially barely fits in or fits in without any extra room. Now, then the next question is on the, is the burden. And really, there is none here. The, it's a small shed with a bathroom. You can't hear it or see it from anywhere. From across the street, from the south or from Hunting Street. And it doesn't create any, create any activity. This is not a situation where you're putting a pool in someplace where there isn't. And then, you know, there's legitimate concern that the pool will lead to noise and disruption. That isn't true here. The pool's there. The sitting area where in between the proposed pool house and the pool is an area that is used now. The furniture out there now. So you're not creating any activity. You're not enhancing any activity. And in fact, the reason that the shape is long and narrow is that in addition to all the vegetative screening, which you saw at great length last time, and I have the pictures if you want to see them again. There's a huge three levels of vegetative screening from Pier Pond Street. In addition to that, this pool house acts as an additional screen so that people by the pools, sitting on lounge chairs, et cetera, in here are screened from Pier Pond Street in addition to all the vegetation by the pool house itself. Now, even with the existing pool and whatever activities take place there, as far as I know, there've never been any complaints. There've never been any formal complaints. There've never been any informal complaints. Nobody's come to the Samuelsons or as far as anyone else and says, wait a second, you're making too much noise. You're disrupting our house. It just hasn't happened. It hasn't happened anywhere in the neighborhood. The neighbor to the south is also screened. You can see on the, excuse me, on the aerial is also screened by the vegetation. Now, the neighbor's house, if these are older, if you will, Google Earth and Google Maps pictures. I discovered just today that there's a new one. And if Bruce, can you let me share my screen now so I can show these?
Absolutely.
I'm going to share mine if I can, I hope. There, this, this is, the neighbors have got a new house. You can see it's a different shape.
Eric, oh. Sorry to interrupt you. I don't, we, I can't see your screen. I think you have to, you press the green button on the, on the bottom screen share.
I thought I did. Hold on a second. Let me go back to the Zoom. Sorry. Here, share.
Eric, I have it handy. If you want me to show it, I can show it.
I guess. I don't know. I, I hit the green button, but nothing happened. Let me try. I'm hitting the green button. And my screen is not coming up. That's my screen. You can't, you guys can't see it?
No. We cannot.
Sorry, let me try once more. Sorry, I have a new computer and this newly installed Zoom, so it's not working. And Bruce, can you get the?
Yeah, no problem.
The Google Earth picture up.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. So Eric, these are the images that we were looking from Google. I think the aerial photo is a little out of date, but when you, when you do the street view, you can see that there's a new shingle style house here. Is this what you were looking for?
This is, I'm sorry, this is disturbing. Can you get the aerial from Google Earth, not Google Maps?
Sure. So first, this is my Google Earth. My Google Earth is still showing the old ranch house.
Go up to the, up to the top where it shows the time things. There's a new one, you know, where it shows.
Is it Voyager?
I don't know what it is. Okay. No, that's not it. Just go back to where you were, Bruce. That's fine. We'll do with that. I had this terrific Google Earth presentation to show you, but it's not there yet. No, go back to the aerial. Thank you.
Sure.
This is the new house that you see. Okay, the new house is over there. This is the new house. Can you see it? That's the old house. The new house is in the same place. The point of this is I don't doubt in any way the sincerity of the neighbor's letter of, but there isn't any substance to it. There's no basis for any concern that they can see. They say, well, it's too long. It's 30 feet long. Well, the reason it's 30 feet long is the reason that I just explained that it acts as an additional screen for noise and any noise or activities in the pool area. They say it's too high. Well, it's 14 feet high. You're allowed to be 16 feet. The trees are more than 20 feet high and the hedge is more than 20. So you can't see it. And they're concerned that it will create more activity or there will be more people. And it doesn't, there's no reason why because the pool, the pool area is already used. Stay where you were, please, Bruce. With the area. You can see in that, that the trees were much higher than the proposed pool house. And as I said earlier, the activities are already there. They're not created by this. In fact, they're screened further by this. Now, also, it's worth noting that the the neighbor's house and the new house is essentially in the same place is about 35 feet from their front lot line. And the patio that you see there, there is a pool house on the new house, which I wish I could show you. I'm sorry, it's not working. The that patio is, and they have a pool in the south of there. There's a patio that's also about 35 feet from their front lot line. And it's not screened. There's no screening. There's no, their hedge is normal hedge height, four to six, four feet or so, five feet. And there's no other screening. And the pool house, which is next to their pool, as I said, is 35 feet away. The present application would put the pool house 48 feet from the lot line and 63 feet from the paving of Hunting Street. And would also put the neighbor's house and their pool and pool house would be about 135 feet from their house. So the point is that there isn't any basis for any concern about this. It doesn't create any, any activities and it's totally screened and very far away. The pool variances, you were concerned last time about the pool variances and the setbacks. I sent a letter to you. Those variances actually support this application. They show, if you can show the site plan again, Bruce. Bruce, can you get the site plan up again? There, which one? They show and, and Ms. Stevenson, you were, as we both were, I was too confused about the rear yards and front yard. If those variances really spell out what happened, obviously there are two front yards. There would be two rear yards, but when you're adding construction, you can choose which one of your rear yards to be your side yard. That's what happened here when this garage that's on the eastern side was added. So for purposes of the construction and under the code, they chose the eastern side to be a side yard. That means that the the southern side is the, is a rear yard. So that goes to the fact that there isn't any place to put this pool house that makes sense or that's feasible without a variance. It would have to be where those two trees are, which are gorgeous 50-year-old cherry trees. And also it's a rear yard and there have to be a variance there. Those trees would go because the roots for you, as you probably well know from your own landscaping, you could not possibly put the pool there without killing those trees. One of the neighbors noted that the new pool house is three feet further from the pool. And it is, you can see that in the the blue dotted lines show where the original application was. And the the new pool house is shown in pink. There was a 70% reduction after the, the neighbors talked and with the applicant. And it was moved, we're happy to move it three feet closer. The reason for that was just to have more gracious area for the chairs that are going to be there anyway. And the pool furniture. And we increased the setback so much from 38 feet to 42 and a half feet that we thought that made sense. But if the board recommends it, we'll certainly move that three back to the original location. The, and I wish I could show you on the neighbor's application. I can't seem to get it shared. Their pool house is the same size. It's about actually a little larger by my measuring it using Google Earth. It's about 350 square feet. This is 300 square feet. So in summation, and going back again to the variances, one of the variances allowed and in the original pool, which is an octagonal pool and much smaller than the existing pool, allowed it to be replaced by the existing pool because it met the minimum setback. That rationale, doing exactly what we're requesting with the spa is where they took the octagonal pool that was in basically in the center where the existing pool is and it's allowed the much bigger existing pool to create that same rationale would apply to the spa. So in summation, the balance and benefit clearly supports the requested variances. There's no burden on the neighbors. It doesn't create any use. It doesn't already exist and adds to the heavy existing vegetative screen. The request has been reduced to the minimum needed to achieve the goal of having a bathroom and changing room and storage area for off-season storage. There's no other location available without destroying important trees and a rear yard variance. And there's no environmental impact. And the application is consistent with the neighborhood. There are many, many pools. If you look at the aerials, there are many pool houses. And in fact, the neighbors across the way have made their own pool house, which is 35 feet from their front yard. There is one place, one possibility. And no, go back to the, if you would, to the, where we were, Bruce. Yeah, there is one possibility for a place for the pool and that would be north of the spa. And you can see on the sightline, the dashed red lines. And the house could be extended and you could create 2,000 square feet more of house and for the pool house in there. But that doesn't make economic sense. It doesn't make design sense. And it's just not necessary in a situation where there's no burden on the, on anybody, on the community or the neighborhood at all. So you'll have one of those rare situations where there's a substantial benefit to the, to the applicant and essentially no burden. Do you folks have any questions? I know there were a couple of questions at the work session I'd be glad to respond to.
Do any board members have questions or comments?
I have a couple. Mr. Bregman, when you talk about the approved patio as the alternative location, that would not require a variance. Is that correct?
Well, what would happen is, that's really an interesting question because it gets to this question of the the required setback and the actual setback for a front yard. At the moment, if you put a pool house, let's say right where that pink patio is in the north.
Well, I'm actually not looking at that. What I was looking at was the lines, the dotted lines that say approved patio to match existing, because that's what I thought you had just said would have added 2,000 square feet more to the house. And is an alternative to what you're asking for with another variance on this property. I'm just trying to understand your statement.
The patio is not that black dotted line. It's the pink to the, to the left of it, to the west of it.
Okay.
That's just making a connection so that people can walk into the house.
Okay.
And it's at grade so that the patio doesn't require a variance because it's at grade.
Because this property, as I understand it from your letter dated on October 5th, has already received multiple variances in order to have the configuration that it does currently, correct?
Well, it received three variances. One was to allow the original pool, which as I said, is essentially in the center of where the existing pool is. One was to.
It was smaller than, it was smaller than.
Yes, it was much smaller. It was about a third the size and octagonal. The second was to make this pool there. And the rationale of that was that it met the required setback of 70 feet. And the other variance was to do an addition on the east side where the garage is, to add the garage there. And that was when they chose to have the the side yard or that eastern side deemed to be the side yard rather than the rear yard. So those were the three variances.
Thank you for the clarification.
Do any other board members have questions or comments?
I have one point of clarification. Mr. Bregman, is this correct? You said there was a 70% reduction in the, in the size of the pool house and it's currently 350 square feet?
No, it's, it was originally, the original application was 760 square feet. It's that blue, it's outlined in blue. Do you see where Bruce is pointing, right?
Yeah.
And it's reduced now to 300 square feet. There is a, the bathroom and shower is 10 square feet. That's that north square. The south square is also 10 square, 10 by 10 or 100 square feet, which is a pure storage area for basically for furniture. And in between is a sitting area. But the sitting area, all of that is walled on the western side.
Just a clarification. This is not a sitting area. It's basically just a vestibule. It's kind of an ante room to go either into the bath. It's not really big enough. It's, it's really just big enough to store the furniture. It's a 10 by 10 space.
So. Is for the furniture storage or the south room is for the furniture storage?
Yeah, they're, they're both, we, actually I could pull up.
And then in the original garage, there's also furniture storage, but it's inconvenient to go from one location to the other.
It's all the way in the, in the east side where those cars are. Plan.
So we're, we're in the off-season, the owner plans to store all the, and this is just, this is just the furniture that they own today. Chase lounges and sofas and this actually 10 by 10 is not big enough. So we're going to be using this, this space as well in the off-season to store the furniture.
This is Susan Stevenson. I don't actually think the storage of the furniture is an issue that what goes on inside the structures is not really up to our knowing that everyone has to store their furniture. So I'm not, I don't find that to be a necessity in this situation.
It's, I agree. It's not a necessity. They have in fact stored the furniture all the way over by the garage. But it does two things. One, it makes it much more convenient and that's a substantial benefit to to the applicant to have the furniture there and make it much easier to deal with. And two, it extends the structure so that it is 30 feet long and narrow. Because that creates, as I was talking about before, an additional screening for whatever activities are going on between the pool house and the pool. An additional screening, excuse me, for noise or screens those activities from the west. So it's really, it's a benefit to both the neighborhood and the applicant. I respectfully submit.
And just as a, sorry. And just as a, sorry, and just as a clarification on the evolution of this design. Um, you know, when our clients originally asked for this pool house, they were really hoping for a sitting area in between, uh, so they could have, you know, bathroom, a, a nice place to sit undercover. Right now, um, there, there's really no, no place. And so the reason why we, we sort of reduced the size because we, it was an outreach to the neighbor who, who had uh, addressed some concerns about the size. So that's where, um, it was a kind of a neighborly compromise and that's how we got here. And, and also I think Eric had mentioned this, that the sort of elongated shape, we decided to go long and thin because, you know, i- it really just is kind of acting like an, an additional screen. We already have one, two, three layers of screening. And then this would act as an additional screen to the pool that, that already exists here.
So um, in, in lawyer's terms, uh, Ms. Stevenson, um, it's a substantial benefit to the storage area is a substantial benefit to the applicant. And it not only is not a burden, but it reduces any possibility of uh, of burdens on the neighbors. That's the theory.
I beg to differ, Mr. Bregman, but you've made your argument and I can choose whether or not to accept it.
I have another question, Mr. Bregman. Um, you raise that, you know, on the table for discussion is locating this, pushing this three feet closer to the existing pool?
Well, yes, I mentioned that because the neighbor's letter, which was the day of the work session, raised the fact that, that the current um, uh, proposal is three feet further away. You can see that the difference between the blue line and the pink line. I don't think it makes any difference. It makes the uh, area more gracious, but uh, we move it backs and move it if that, if the board thinks that's appropriate or benefit uh, back to where the blue line is. That's what I was talking about. I thought it was not clear.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Bregman, you, you said that locating the pool house on the north side of the pool doesn't make economic or design sense. But could you, could you support that?
Well, you'd, the um, at the moment, you'd need a variance to put it there unless you extended the whole house all the way over to um, where that seventy foot uh, red line is. So you really have to, and, and the applicant uh, um, made a an analysis of it. You'd have to add about two thousand square feet to the house to get, to get the pool house in there. Um, otherwise, otherwise it would still be in the front yard. If you put the house, for example, where, where that patio is, that pink patio, and figured out how to do something there, it'd still be in the front yard. Because the front yard is determined about, you know, where up to the actual, the actual front yard is where the house is. So you'd have to extend the house all the way over to the seventy foot setback to, to do that, which is a lot more expensive. Um, and is awkward in terms of the design of the house itself.
I don't understand that. There's a seventy foot line and another seventy foot line that allows.
Here's, here's the, here's, it, it is complicated and it's, it's something that actually only the village, this village does as far as I know. There are two ways to measure uh, the front yard. How far the front yard goes from the front lot line, uh, how far back? There's what's called a required um, uh, front yard, which means that you can't build a house, your principal house, less than seventy feet from the front lot line. That's what that seventy foot line is right above the uh, the pool. And right above the pool house, right? And that's what that red dashed line is. In other words, if you came and wanted to say, here's my plan. I want to build a house. You can't build it closer to the road than that seventy feet. However, the actual front yard is the distance from the lot line to where the house is. Now, because it's on a corner, it's a, that's what makes it really weird. It's obvious that the fr- the front yard on the north side is where the real front of the house is, right? So that front yard is measured from um, Hunting Street or that boundary line down to the house. The front yard for purposes, here, the actual front yard is measured from the lot line all the way to where the house is, which is over, you can see those double doors to the right of the pink. So it's not seventy feet. It's substantially more. That's what's confusing about this and I understand your confusion because uh, it's an unusual way, confusing way to deal with it.
Mark.
So if we were going to put the.
So the confusion, the confusion is this, it's, it's not, I mean, I can clear up the confusion, I think. In this case, you're asking essentially for, for two variances. You're asking to put an accessory structure in the front yard, meaning that the accessory structure is located between the house and the property boundary. That's one variance. And a second variance request is that you are locating the pool house in the front yard setback, which is seventy feet. What we're asking, and, and I think you're, you're starting to answer it, is we're asking why you can't locate the pool house? Yes, in the front yard, but not in the front yard setback, meaning locate the pool house to the west side of the house.
And, and yes, I was trying to address that. In order to do that, you'd have to ex- um, extend. You'd still need a variance because you'd still be in the front yard unless the side of the house, which is really the front, was built out to the seventy foot yard. You'd need a variance to put it there as well.
No, no, you, you need a variance to locate the accessory structure in the front yard. But you would not be in the front yard setback. So what we're asking is, can you locate the pool house so that you are not in the front yard setback?
Well, it would be quite difficult because there isn't that much room, as you can see from the drawing. But it gets back to the question of um, of the balance. I mean, this is one of those uh, very unusual situations where there isn't any downside to uh, the community or the neighborhood. I get back to the very basic uh, balance. You can't hear this or see this. It doesn't create any uh, activity if you had the pool house as you are suggesting, Mr. Chairman. Um, north of the pool, it'd be the same thing, be the same number of people using the pool, the same activities going on as go on now. So the pool house doesn't create any disturbance or that. I'm not saying there is any disturbance because there hasn't been any complaints from anybody. Everybody's gotten along with this. Um, but whatever activity is there, isn't changed by the pool house. So it doesn't create any burden at all. So you have a significant benefit and no burden. And moving it north is, and Bruce perhaps can speak better that it's really awkward with the house and there really isn't much room without, actually, if, if you took the same thing, even if you made it twenty feet wide and you put it there, it would be essentially you'd have to extend the whole house to do that.
I think, yeah, I, I, from, from an architectural point of view and just in keeping with the character and the historic character of the neighborhood, it would just be really weird and it'd be a difficult, I don't think there's, there's much room. Plus, I, I'm not sure it would actually function like a pool house. It would almost just, uh, it would be almost like, like Eric said, it would be an extension of the house, if anything, which is of an awkward, awkward situation.
And Bruce, if, if it was an extension of the house, why is the calculation two thousand square feet being required if it's an.
It's a, so you know, when we, I kind of come from things from an aesthetic point of view and I know that this isn't, this boards, you know, we, we will also have to go to the architectural review board and um, you know, we, we got, we actually did a nice renovation, did the uh, really, really great clients and they want to do the right thing. They have this beautiful shingle style home. Um, and we've tried to protect the character of it. They have this really beautiful sunroom that gets sun all day long. It's really lovely. Uh, you know, from an architect's point of view, if, if I'm putting uh, what's, you know, what essentially is like a darker room on top of this, it, it really compromises this, this existing space. So I'm, you know, I guess what you're asking me is, why aren't we kind of jamming a a, another structure around this and it's, it's really to try to protect the character of the house that, that's existing. And you know, we just feel that the scale of this coming, again, strictly coming from an architect's point of view, the scale, uh, how it relates to the pool, the symmetry, and also just functionally. Um, the house really, the, the pool, the way the pool house is designed, it's, it's really to alleviate um, any, if there's any activity that's going on, like Eric said, number one, you can't see through it anyway with all the vegetation. Um, but this would just act like an additional screen and, and from an architectural point of view, it's a nice kind of compositional uh, element that, that anchors the entire, the entire property. We, we're really trying to keep intact the character of the shingle style.
But do, do you think it requires, if it's added to the house, and I understand the, the sunroom the, the points you were making about that, but why did it add two thousand square?
I haven't, I haven't studied. I haven't, you know, we, we actually didn't study. We didn't spend time or energy or, you know, money studying that just because it just didn't seem like the right solution at all. Um, but I think, I think part of the, be- because of the distance that you, we'd have to create to, to make it, to make it have a meaningful connection. Number one, we'd be expanding the principal structure. And you know, the principal structure, I believe we can't go beyond the eighty foot, right? So if we're connected to the house, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, without getting another, like you said, I would need a variance to extend the house to the red line. And you know, that's really, you know, you could see that still is ha- has a kind of awkward relationship to the pool. This seems to frame the pool in, in a positive way.
Bruce, do we have a picture of the front of the house? I don't think we do.
I believe we've all seen the front of the house by going and driving past.
So you can see that it is, is a two-story house, uh, even I believe on the western side. So extending it at a different level would be again, difficult and unawkward architecturally. You can see it. Where we go, there we, there we go. So to get that house all the way out there, you'd have to, part of the reason I, Mr. Greenwater, uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree. It's part of the reason that's two thousand square feet as to, to make that work, it would have to be uh, architecturally, it would have to be uh, two stories, but even if one story, it's still a thousand square feet as opposed to the three hundred we are proposing.
And then I, I think um, this one other point I, I wanted to look at in your, in your paperwork that you submitted, there was a certificate of occupancy with a survey attached that showed a proposed pool um, to the east side of the pool, the existing pool. Did you see that survey?
Pool house, not pool.
I'm sorry, the pool house was, was to the east of, of the pool. It showed a proposed pool on a squires hold and survey.
And yeah, tha- and that I included it because it was there, but as you saw that was withdrawn because apparently it didn't work. I don't know why. I, there's nothing in the re- um, in the papers except that it was withdrawn. Um, and instead they put the uh, existing, you know, the octagonal pool uh, where, where it is and, and expanded that pool.
Oh, we, was that, are you saying that survey was, was, was proposed at the time that there was a, a different shape for the pool?
Yes, and also that's my understanding. And also it, the, the application was withdrawn. I mean, it never, they never went forward with it for a number of reasons. One of which is the trees, among other things. And there is a change in level. This, the, the house is at a higher level. The, the the patio to the south is at a higher level. You see there's steps going down. So it, it, again, if you uh, stuck a pool house right where it says existing patio, even if you could squeeze it in, it would be very awkward and not work with the, uh, with the contours of the ground. And I'm just guessing at that, I'm assuming that's why they didn't, but they withdrew it and went ahead and uh, later shortly thereafter, did the application to get the bigger pool.
You, do any board members have any additional questions or how, how, how does the board want to leave this? Should we adjourn this for all purposes at this point? Discuss it further at our work session?
I'd move to close it.
There, there are three attendees um, still left in the pool. Is, is this the only application you, you're hearing something else tonight?
Would you ask if any of the attendees would, would like to speak to this application?
Yeah. Are any of the attendees here for this application? Does not look like any hands are going up.
Is there a reason to leave it open? We've had two long presentations by Mr. Bregman and the architect.
Joyce, how, how do you feel?
No, I think, I mean, I think I moved that we should go ahead and close it.
And Julia? Is Julia there?
If I agree, I believe we're ready to close it. I'm ready to close it.
Okay, so can we close it and um, but keep it open for a little while, at least until the work session for any uh, uh, written submissions if the applicants want to submit anything in writing or if any neighbors want to submit anything in writing? So can I have a motion to close this application for decision, but keep it open for written submission until uh, the work session?
I just assume close it, but I feel like we've gotten letters from the neighbor. I just assume close it, just close it for written decision, but what, I don't know how others feel.
Joyce, how do you feel? I was just going to close it, but, but keep it open until the work session for written submissions.
Yeah, I agree with that, uh, because I think just in case there's any uh, neighbors that want to file further comments.
Okay, so um, I'll make a motion to close the application, case number three, one, one, two, eighty-eight Hunting Street. Except for written decisions can be submitted prior to the next work session. Can I have a second?
Second.
And then all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
And Susan?
Aye, reluctantly.
And Joyce?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, okay, so case number three, one, one, two, eighty-eight Hunting Street is uh, closed for written decision, but written submissions can be provided prior to the next work session. And um, who's in the audience, uh, Jody? Because we don't have any additional on our agenda.
Right. It looks like a Gary Sanders from Schleit Architect, William Schleit and a Jenny Samuel, Samuelson are in the attendee pool. Are any of those uh, for that uh, adjourned last case? I'm wondering.
They're for the uh, thing that's at the ARB now.
Okay, Jenny Samuelson, if you can still hear me as the applicant here in the uh, Hunting Street.
Yes.
Oh, Jenny Samuelson is for, okay. So there's the, the one, are the architects of William Schleit and a Gary Sanders.
Yeah, but that case is adjourned pending. Um,
Okay.
The ARB review, which I, I believe they've started. I believe that it's in front of the ARB and the ARB is providing comments to the applicant. So can I have a motion to to close our public hearing? October 28th and a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody.